... selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, June 29, 2016. As is customary, would you please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we're still standing, I would like to mention the passing of Mrs. Mary Pacico, who is the aunt of town clerk, Sumideris, and also the passing of my sister-in-law, Laura Gulat, wife of Judge Gulat, who passed away about 20 days ago. And I would ask for a moment of silence, please. I would also mention that I met Mary Pacico in 2008 because that was when the Old Somus Avenue Bridge Replacement Project was announced, and Mary was one of the landowners on Old Somus Avenue who gave us a temporary easement for the construction of that prop- that new bridge.
We don't have any minutes to approve tonight? Okay. We'll write the approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant, 53A-16, in the amount of $90,603.39 dated June 29th. Warrant 53B-16 in the amount of $27,866.48, and warrant 53C-16 in the amount of $26,361.43, also dated June 29th. Those are all payroll warrants. Warrant 53D-16 in the amount of $104,027.18, and warrant 53E-16 in the amount of $1,391.11, also dated June 29th. All be approved.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Passes unanimously.
Those last two were accounts payable warrants.
Next, we have correspondence. We have one piece from Provanta regarding price escalation for FY '17. Mrs. Gulat, would you?
Provanta is the company that actually operates what we all call CMAS in Rochester, the incineration facility that takes our trash. This letter indicates that, "Please see the attached worksheet calculating the escalation rate per ton for fiscal year 2017. The new disposal rate per ton for the Town of Dayton at CMAS effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017 will be $68.69. Please let me know if you have any questions regarding this matter." The rate of increase is based on the Consumer Price Index, and the Consumer Price Index went up 4 percent. So the basic tip fee for this year was $67.98. It has increased 71 cents, and so the rate for the new year is $68.69 per ton.
Thank you.
While we're at it, do we want to mention Borges Brothers?
I think we have it down here.
Is that- that's right, because we've- yes, okay, that's new business. Okay, thank you.
Announcements. Tonight's announcements: Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. You can call 508-669-6431 for more information. There is a prescription drug drop box now located at the Dayton Police Station. It is limited to pill-form prescriptions only. You may contact the Dayton Police Station at 508-669-6711 for more information. Since tonight's Board of Selectmen's meeting is a special meeting because we are on our summer schedule, and this was a night that was scheduled not to have a meeting, we're having this special meeting because we have some- few things to clear up and clean up and pass and approve before the end of the fiscal year. So we just wanted to remind you that the Board of Selectmen will be having a regular meeting next Wednesday, July 6, 2016. The Dayton Public Library has museum passes available for residents with a library card. They are available on a first-come, first-served basis. You can reserve them by phone, in person, or online. The passes include Buttonwood Park Zoo, Battleship Cove, Museum of Science, the Salem Witch Museum, the Mystic Aquarium, the Hall at Patriot Place, and others. You can go to www.daytonlibrary.org for more information. There will be a celebration in honor of the D.R. Falcons baseball team, winning the Division II Eastern Mass State Finals on Saturday, July 30, from noon to 5:00 p.m. It will be held behind Town Hall at the Dayton Lions Pavilion. There will be a small parade followed by a cookout. All are invited. Help us celebrate this huge achievement. We will form a committee, which will be asking area businesses for donations. If you, resident, friends, relatives, would like to help out with the event or would like to donate, please call the Selectmen's Office at 508-669-6431 and choose option number one from the main menu. All donations will be accepted. And I might add that- where did I have that before? This one? Oh, okay, that's coming next. I'll skip that one. There will be a meeting that has been posted by the Board of Selectmen on next week, July 6, 2016, at 6:30 p.m. for anyone that's interested in helping with donations, planning the event, raffle tickets, cooks for this D.R. Falcons baseball team celebration. Again, we're going to form a committee. If you have any interest at all or would like to help us out, please do so, and that meeting will start at 6:30 next Wednesday, July 6. Meetings of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health are now being posted to YouTube under the name Town of Dayton Meetings. You may go to the Town website and follow the link to Dayton's YouTube page, or you can go to YouTube and type in Town of Dayton Meetings. If you need further assistance, call the Board of Selectmen's Office and ask for selectmen's or raffle.
Happy.
Town Hall will be closed on Monday, July 4, in observance of Independence Day, and the 5th Annual Rereading of the Declaration of Independence will be held Monday, July 4, at 8:30 p.m. at the Dayton Community Church. Moving right along, under Old Business, Review Discuss an Act on an Update of the Ambulance Billing Writeoffs.
Mr. Chairman, Chief Rodrick came in yesterday, and we had received the new printout from FFA, and this was supposed to be in response to the request at last week's meeting when we specified exactly what it was we needed so that we could follow each call that they're recommending for write-off, from the time the call was received right through the balance, if there is a balance still. Unfortunately, and that- the list we were looking at last week totaled- it was over $189,000 that was recommended that we write off. Unfortunately, the list that came in this time did not fit the criteria that we asked for. We weren't able to reconcile it with either of the two lists that we received over the past month or so. It did not total $189,000, so basically it was worthless. We couldn't do anything with it. When I asked Chief Rodrick about it, he said that there are some other lists that are coming. I don't know if those lists, together with the lists that he brought in, will equal $189,000, but I pointed out to him that the format is not what we asked for either. So at this point in time, we can't take any action on this because we don't have any data that can be substantiated or audited. I don't even have an answer for you on the March 2016 trip that we were asked to write off because they didn't know where the person was. So, and the other thing I will point out, the list that we got that totaled $189,000 plus the prior week had numerous reasons why we should do it. This one, I believe, as I remember, had two reasons. One was either bankruptcy or beyond statute, but that didn't correspond to the other lists either. So we didn't have a point of reconciliation, so we're going to have to wait until the chief brings in the next round of reports.
Thank you, Nina.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Has Chief Rodrick been submitting monthly reports to the Board or to the accountants since this issue has been raised to our attention?
I haven't seen any.
No, not to my knowledge.
The only reports that I'm aware of are the ones that we requested, that- the first one was over $313,000, and then it was $189,000, and now it's less than that, but there's no way to reconcile them at this point. So other than- other than the lists that we've requested, that are quite frankly worthless, I have not seen anything else, and I don't believe the chief is working on anything other than just asking for these reports from- I believe the last two were FFR.
This last spreadsheet that we just received this week, the only- one notation on it stood out. The amount of suggested write-offs decreased probably over $100,000 from what the previous paperwork told us, but what differentiated on these reports that were sent this week, Monday, was the progress that this debt-collecting company had accomplished in the amount of write-offs they recommended this time, which was just below $70,000. These write-offs came in the course of between 2005 and 2010, and in that period, I believe there were seven pages of ambulance runs. They had collected a total for the Town of Dayton, which they're under contract with, $200. So we're not getting too far with this debt collection agency at all. So hopefully, with the next set of paperwork that they send us and spreadsheets, that we can try to somehow put them all together and come up with what we can legally and appropriately write off. But we'll let everybody- we'll update everybody as soon as we get information. So bear with us, please. Under New Business, Review Discuss an Act on the Approval- Approval of the Complete Streets Policy. Didn't we do this already?
I thought we did approve it.
You tabled it to be distributed to the Department Heads, or you give feedback?
Well, that's right, reviewing feedback, okay.
Oh, okay. How is it, real McCoy? We didn't get any feedback from Department Heads. Okay. So in other words, this is what we'll attempt to tonight, then.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the Complete Streets Policy for the Town of Dayton, as we read at the last meeting, and is presented here tonight.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda, Review Discuss an Act to Approve the Highway Department Employees' Union Employees' Contract. I do believe at this point, yesterday, Mrs. Gulat had reworded some of the articles within the contract that did not change the content whatsoever. It was more grammar and proper grammatical structure of sentences. The Highway- Union Highway Department employees, Stuart, had picked it up last night, was just going to review it with his other people, type the final little corrections that were made, and get it back to us in time for us to approve it tonight, but unfortunately, he must have, you know, had other things that he had to do so that we don't have the final draft to approve tonight. So I'll entertain a motion to table this to a future meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have- again, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. That motion is tabled unanimously. Next on the agenda, Review Discuss an Act for a Request for an End-of-Year Budget Transfer from the Building Department Gasoline and Diesel Fuels Account to the Plumbing Inspection We have a budget transfer request form in the amount of $400 from the Building Department's gasoline and diesel fuel account to be transferred to the Plumbing Inspection Account, and again, that amount is $400.
I move that we approve the transfer as outlined.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. That passes unanimously. Still under New Business, Review Discuss an Act to Award a Bid for Town of Dayton Trash Bags for FY '17.
Mr. Chairman, at the Board of Health meeting earlier this evening, the Board voted to reject all of the bids that had been submitted because in reviewing the data that came in, there appeared to be some inconsistencies in the method that was used to collect the proposals, so we will put this out again and ask for entirely new proposals.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Review Discuss an Act for a Road Opening Permit for Columbia Gas of Massachusetts for 242 Bedford Street. We have a request from Columbia Gas of Massachusetts and Brockton, Mass. to renew and relocate gas service on 242 Bedford Street, which will require a road opening. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve that request.
Please second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all- I didn't see none. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. That motion carries. Next, Review Discuss an Act on Changes to the Trash and Recycling Schedule and Award the FY '17 Contract.
Let's just want this to sign.
Oh, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we had the pleasure of meeting with the owner of Borges Brothers Trucking, who happens to be our vendor for all the trash pickup and recycling and work that he does down the transfer station as far as taking the bulky items out of there. Mr. Borges and his company have serviced this town for decades, and he had a little concern when he visited us yesterday, and that concern was what's happening in Dayton. He himself, obviously, when he was younger, used to go around and collect all the trash in the town for his father and his family, but he was rather surprised at what he discovered because of the amount of overtime that his company is paying to his employees right now. He himself took the liberty to go out and kind of drive around the town and see, you know, what's happened in Dayton. Well, he was shocked, as everyone is well aware of the growth that is happening in this town. He has drawn up a proposal, which is a win-win situation for not only the Town of Dayton but for Borges Brothers Trucking to stay in business without paying absorbing amounts of overtime to do the work that is just too much to be done on a three-day schedule. What Mr. Borges has proposed, not a one-year contract, but a three-year contract to make this whole thing work, is to pick up household trash at all the residents five days a week. In addition, the every-other-week recyclable pickups just can't be done in three days any longer. What's happening is the people in this town are so, so well-adverse about their recyclables and doing such a fine job that it's cost Mr. Borges quite a bit of overtime. He no longer can send his truck out on one day and pick up two weeks' worth of recyclables without having the truck leave the town to empty and then come back to the town and still have his workers out there sick 6:30 at night. So his new proposal, this next three years, in addition to the five-day-a-week trash pickup, is going to be recyclable pickup every single week. I think it's a- it's a good move. I think it's- it'll do well for the town if people don't have to lug out six and seven containers worth of recyclables every two weeks. Whatever day we come up with a new schedule for pickup, wherever you may live, he himself right now is remapping the Town of Dayton. It may take a couple weeks to get it finalized. Be advised that we will let everyone know. We will have it on the website. We'll have maps hanging here of when your days will be for pickup, and that will be one stop every single week for all your household trash and all your recyclables. Again, it's a good move. We've always had a year-to-year contract with Borges Brothers Trucking, and he wants to make this work so well that he's proposed a three-year contract with a minimal 2% increase, you know, for the second and third year, which is a very, very fine gesture on his part. So I ask my fellow colleagues to go on and approve this three-year extended contract to Borges Brothers Trucking Incorporated.
So moved.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to say I think this is a really great idea. When I was running for Selectmen, some of the comments I got all the time were, "I think the biweekly recycling isn't sufficient because my stuff is piling up." I got it a lot, and I really think that the people of Dayton will support this and think this is a fabulous idea.
Especially when you consider you look around to a neighboring communities, yes, the tax rate might be a little high, but you also have to consider the services that this town provides for people. There is a slight increase for this, obviously, five-day workweek, but it's to accommodate the needs of this growing community, and this is what this gentleman has addressed, and he's proposed, and there's no doubt in my mind, it'll be a win-win situation for both, not only the Town of Dayton but Borges Brothers. Is there any other discussion?
You need a second.
I second.
I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. That passes unanimously.
I leave a lot of space in my garage where I stockpile my recyclables for two weeks.
People do such a good job. Conscientious.
Dayton went green.
Next on the agenda, Review Discuss an Act on a Policy for Posting Meeting Agendas to the Town Website. Brett, would you like to handle that up?
Yes. Do you want me to read this, or do you just want me to speak?
Sure. You can speak, too.
Great. I will just, instead of reading this, I just want to say, I had had many residents ask me, you know, our residents are very busy people. They often have children. They often lead full-time jobs, both parents in the household. They don't have a lot of time to come to the meetings, but oftentimes there are certain things that pique their interest that they might be willing to come to the meeting and discuss or put input during public input, and I just think it would be a good idea to establish a policy whereby we post the meeting agenda before the meeting, knowing that it is likely to be revised.
On the website.
On the website, excuse me.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, which is a very good one. We're always open to ideas to get the word out there as much as we can. You all know that, you've probably heard from all three of the board here at one time or another, how difficult it is to communicate within the boundaries of this town because of the amount of different papers that are in the town, the lack of internet in over half the houses in the town, unable to know how to use the internet, so it's very difficult. So we do our best to accommodate those that we can. With that said, any other discussion?
The only thing I would say is that- Karen, will you be posting it?
Yes.
The thing is, we have a 48-hour deadline to meet because of state law and public meetings, so Karen posts our agenda to meet that deadline. However, there are times when there have to be revisions, so if you read it, for example, for the meeting next week, she's going to post by tomorrow or late, or she'll be posting it on Monday. tomorrow, or late, or she'll be posting it on Monday, but if you read it once, be sure to go back and check it one more time because there may have been some changes made to it, and there might be something on there you would wanna come to talk about, or you may have been planning to come and find out that it has been postponed to another meeting.
Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. That passes unanimously. Any reports?
I just wanna mention, when we were talking about the complete streets policy that we adopted earlier tonight, I had mentioned once before that we have a couple of projects that we're hoping to get some funding from the state under complete streets, and that's the extension of the sidewalk on the south side of Center Street out to 138, and also the Main Street Zenica Project. The sidewalk extension project is officially underway. A week or so back, Roy Delano from John Delano and Associates, the engineering surveying firm that the town has used, came, Roy came to meet with Tom Ferry and me, and we walked the area where the new sidewalk will be installed, to the residents on the south side of Center Street, including the business owners and the county. I'm hoping to get letters out tomorrow to each location, each property owner, just to let you know this project is moving forward. The engineer surveillor, Roy Delano, is working on the plans that we need, and today I forwarded to him by mail copies of the property cards so he knows who the property owners are at each of the locations. And in addition to private property owners, we have one business, we also have the, the county to deal with because of the lawn at the Aggie School, but also, we'll be dealing with the Commonwealth of Mass. because they own the old railroad bed, and part of that area is involved with this. So, the procedure will be easements and rights of entry. So, we'll be in touch with the property owners as time progresses, but we, as I say, I'm hoping to get those letters in the mail tomorrow from the Board, just to let everybody know, we are moving ahead with this, and now that we have our policy approved, this can go on to the state with whatever materials have to be filed to get us into the complete streets program, and hopefully, some funding, because that's, you also voted on that at town meeting, to accept any money that would come our way for that. So, keep your fingers crossed that we get some state aid to handle this sidewalk project because it's very important, and it's really a safety issue on Center Street because of the amount of traffic and the fact that children from our schools go down to the Aggie School or to the river, and their students come over to our schools for various reasons in educational projects that are ongoing at, ongoing at the elementary and/or the middle school.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, Selectman Gulat.
Acknowledgements, we have the acknowledgement of three anonymous donations totaling $65 to the library for the children's room in memory of Mrs. Laura Gulat. Do I have a motion to accept them and...
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge the donations to the library in the amount of $65 as reported.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Which brings us to public input. We have a very slim crowd here tonight, so I don't think we'll be having any input. I would like to, before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I'd like to wish everybody a very happy 4th of July weekend. It is a long weekend. It's, it's always nice to remind those that like to have fun that fun comes with being safe. Fireworks is not the safest hobby or activity that one can engage in. That's why those that go and, and look at these big fireworks displays, the people that, that run those and, and set off all these exhibits have licenses and certificates, and there's a reason for it. So, we ask you to be very cautious and, and know how far you can go with even a little firecracker, you know, be safe, watch out for the kids, and leave that to the people that have license to do so. And again, have a very safe weekend, a happy weekend, and we'll see you all next week.
And in addition, folks, fireworks in Massachusetts are illegal, and you know that if you enter from New Hampshire, where quite often people's cars are stopped as they enter the state. And the other thing too is, relative to fireworks, not everybody likes them going off at 11 o'clock at night. Be considerate of elderly, and also people with small children who have probably got them in bed and hopefully asleep until the fireworks go off. And the other thing is, we really don't want our police and firefighters having to respond here, there, and everywhere to calls because of fire, fireworks going off. They're here for emergencies, real emergencies, which could be life-threatening, so please, be considerate of them. And the other thing I would mention is, just remember, we all read the papers, we all know about the horrendous accidents that have resulted from alcohol and drug abuse. Please, enjoy the holiday, but be responsible, and remember, your actions will directly affect not only you, but somebody else's family and your own family if there is an accident, whether it's injury or fatalities. None of us, none of us wanna experience that, so please, be responsible, enjoy the weekend.
Brett?
I just want to second what Selectman Gulat said. I live in a part of town where there happen to be elderly, you know, housing developments like Lincoln Village, you know, I just worry that, you know, they get disturbed by the loud noises. I'm all, we live in a very, we live in the country, we have a lot of trees, I'm worried about trees catching on fire from fireworks, so, you know, it's illegal, so we should all be abiding by the law.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Good night, Cable, and thank you very much, Cable, for all your good, hard work, and have a nice, long weekend.
See ya next Wednesday.